At this time, I will recall to order the meeting of the Suffolk Central Board of Education for Monday, October 7th, 2019. Let the record reflect that all board members are present, and the time is 8:08. Please rise for the pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a quick note that we got about 95% of the executive session done. We will be adjourning after this meeting to go back up just to finish one conversation. We will not be coming back down there, but just wanted to just make you all aware. Student report. We have a different student.
Hi, my name is Olivia Blau. I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. So I'm also a high school liaison for the Board of Education along with Mikey Ryan, who was here last meeting. So a few things that are going on in the high school before the next meeting is on October 17th, the World Language Honor Society induction is happening, and I think it's at 5:30 PM. So that's the French Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, Chinese, Italian, and Sign Language Honor Society. And then the day after, October 18th, there's going to be an assembly for the juniors and seniors. And it's with Brian Keen, and he's going to be talking about overcoming adversity. And then on the 21st of October, there's a PTA meeting. So that's all that's happening before October 22nd.
Thank you.
That's Olivia.
Okay, minutes of the regular meeting for September 17th. Is there a motion to approve these? Mr. Shapiro, second.
Second.
Mr. McKenzie. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Motion passes. Acting Superintendent comments.
Last week, we had the good fortune to celebrate the beginning of Montebello's Elementary Schools' 50th anniversary. We had a lovely ceremony outside with all students, the drum line, kids sang some songs. A number of retired teachers and administrators participated, and it was a beautiful morning. At the exact same time, part of the thruway was being dedicated to Thurgood Marshall, and a number of district employees and government officials took part in that event. So two wonderful things unfortunately scheduled at the exact same time. October is also National Principals Month, so we look forward to features on each of our principles being shared through our press outlets and social media.
Thank you. Public participation on action items only. Anybody who wishes to speak on action items only, please approach the podium. The session will last 30 minutes. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. Please refrain from mentioning any specific individuals, employees, students, et cetera.
All right, good evening. Matthew Bogans, Senior at Suffolk High School. I'm elated that the board meeting is being livestreamed tonight. This has been an issue which has been quite important for a while, and we should thank the Suffolk Education Association for doing this for us. As we see the board meeting as being livestreamed, it is confusing to me that the board is thinking that the district needs to spend money to livestream it while the technological situation in the high school is struggling. A video published on February 27th, or 22nd, 2017 by the Suffolk Central School District, a Suffolk High School administrator claims we're expanding our Wi-Fi, so if a student comes in with their own personal laptop or their tablet, we want them to be able to access all their materials and be able to use those materials to further their education. Taxpayers and students were lied to by putting out this statement close to three years ago. This technology still hasn't been implemented in our school. In the business classroom, my classmates and I constantly run into the problem of inadequate and unreliable technology. Being that this is a college class, the use of technology is imperative to learning in this lack of resources impeded on lessons. The Chromebooks that are currently in use across the high school are the first-generation laptops, which are falling apart and just don't meet the standard for 21st century learning, as the district always advertises. It was promised to us in 2017 that these Chromebooks would be phased out, yet I only seen influx of them in all my classrooms. Along the lines of the inadequate technology is not accessible to students as it should be. Only three students are allowed to the library during study hall, yet there are no Chromebooks available for use during this time, a promise that was also made by administrators. Even better, students don't have access to Wi-Fi. So the idea of paperless assignments is literally impossible. It's wonderful to see iPads being implemented into the schools at the elementary and middle school levels, but this process has been extremely slow, and many students, teachers, and parents feel neglected in a way at the high school level because we have gotten the short end of the stick. All of the old, used Chromebooks that the younger students now do not need are coming up for the high school students to use them, or at least try to. It's just not fair. Many students like myself are in honors and are AP classes, which require tons of hard work. Technology should not be another obstacle standing in the way of the success of these children. Thank you.
Anybody else? Seeing as there are no other speakers at this time, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Move on to action items. These are action items 2.01 through 2.13. Does anybody have any items that they wish to pull at this time? I am going to pull 2.08. Is there anything else anybody needs? Or we can have a consent agenda?
I have 2.12, 2.13.
Okay, so 2.12 and 2.13? So we use a consent agenda for action items 2.0? Oh, sorry. I'll pull 2.01 as well. Consent agenda for 2.02 through 2.07, 2.09 through 2.11. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda? Ms. Reamer? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Thank you. Okay, 2.01. Do I have a motion? Mr. Donnelly? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? I just needed to read a quick correction on the personnel report. It's the only reason it was pulled. Listed online for the appointment of Thomas Mascola, the tenure area was listed as science. It should read technology education, and the effective date should read October instead of November. There's no correction that needs to be made with the individual. It was simply a mistake on what was on board docs. So I just wanted to make sure that the public was clear. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Yes, you may.
Just want to take a minute to congratulate Mr. Mascola and Mr. Morgan on their tenure. Thank you to the board for voting on it. Two wonderful, amazing additions to our district and to Suffolk Middle School. And it will be celebrated with everyone in April, but a special night tonight. And just wanted to take a moment to congratulate them.
Thank you.
Okay. 2.08 is the memorandum of agreement for Assistant Superintendent Business. Do I have a motion? Mr. McKenzie? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cairns? I pulled this just so that I can read a resolution since it's not up online right now. Be it resolved that the board hereby appoints Stephen Schloica to the position of Assistant Superintendent for Business in the Assistant Superintendent for Business tenure area effective January 6th, 2020 through January 5th, 2024, as recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions?
Oh, we don't abstain? Okay, so in favor.
Just try that again. All those in favor signify by saying ayes. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Are you sure? Motion passes. Thank you. 2.12. 2.12, is there a motion? Mr. Shapiro? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? Discussion.
Oh, oh, sorry. Well, I know that Ms. Zaya told me she's not here tonight, but every month we're supposed to get the treasurer's report. Can you guys hear me okay? Every month we're supposed to get a treasurer's report for the prior month right away. And we've been getting them in like a delay. And this is something that's been, you know, one of our audit, state auditors have come back and dinged us about it. Also, I've been asked for it before to have access to the computer system so that we can look at the expenditures and the revenues coming in and compare things. So I'm asking for that again. I'm also asking that if we don't get access to the computer system, that we please have expenditure reports and revenue reports that compare prior year to prior year-to-date so that we can see where we are, you know, for each individual line item. And not just a treasurer's report that we're reading that really doesn't mean much in this scheme of things. And if we can have those treasurer reports now that we have a Assistant Superintendent of Business, hopefully we'll start getting those timely.
Any other comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions? Okay. Motion passes. 2.13 is their motion. Mr. Shapiro? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Same.
Same. See above. I'll do my notes, see above. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those against? Any abstentions?
Same.
Passes. Thank you. Okay, information items. 3.01, vaccination compliance.
Dr. Castaldo?
Just in case you can hear me. Okay, so I'm going to fill you in on everything that we have regarding vaccination compliance and immunization, and then ask questions if I haven't covered it. So we've always had in Suffolk Central as has every district, both medical exemptions and religious exemptions to vaccination compliance. The state has prescribed when children need to be vaccinated, and everyone else kind of follows lockstep with that. We've had issues at times where someone will show up, let's say in middle school or in high school with a second or third of a vaccination missing. That parent is then told, and they're told the child won't be able to attend if they get that, but parents who are usually vaccinating do follow through with that. Everything changed a little starting in January where the first instances, we got some notifications from the state regarding the measles outbreak. That turned into in the spring, Rockland County prohibiting students who didn't have the measles vaccine from attending school or participating in sports. That's when we started having bigger conversations with our parents who had religious exemptions. We got past the spring. Some of them at that point had vaccinated their children either with that first measles vaccine so that they could attend school, or they followed through with everything. Fast forward to June, and New York State eliminated all of the non-medical exemptions. So we had a sizable number of students that fell in that category, sizable for what we deal with in PPS, not for the whole district. In June, they eliminated all of those non-medical exemptions. That totaled 15 students in this district. The parents were alerted by the nurses at that time. We followed up with a letter that the attorneys drafted in August. That came from me rather than the principals, because to get all of the principals together at that point, a little more difficult. So that came from me on August 9th. The parents were alerted that the children would have to be vaccinated. At the same time, the medical exemption, students all have to kind of re-up that every year. So they were also told by the nurses, we need all of your new medical documentation. Of the 15 students that were religious exemptions that are sitting in our district schools, of those students tour in Slutberg, and they are putting through a homeschooling application, and they're going through that process. That's when the parents take care of all of the instruction in the home. Three are in Montebello, and they have started vaccinating. So when you begin the vaccination process, it's on a catch-up schedule. So as long as they stay true to that schedule and keep their appointments, they'll be allowed to still attend school. Four were in Suffolk Middle School, and they are in the process of a catch-up schedule as well. In the high school, there were five students, one of whom is over the age of 18 and is sitting in Suffolk High School GOSI's program, and therefore is allowed to remain in school. The other four are on catch-up schedules. Medical exemptions, we have one sitting in Suffolk Middle School. It's documented and all up to date as a medical exemption, so can attend school. Two in the high school who are documented, and can attend as well. One who is homeschooled, and one who's in the process of getting us the documentation to remain in school. The parents were sent a letter September 13th by the principals that on September 19th they would be excluded if they weren't vaccinated. And that's when most of the catch-up schedules definitely went. So that's where we sit right now with vaccination compliance. We've been very careful and on board with New York State in their directives and on our attorney's advice to follow vaccination compliance. I think that the most recent outbreak of the measles, which was heavily Rockland County, Brooklyn, and some in Orange County, really kind of woke the state up too that they wanted to get rid of those religious exemptions. And that's something they do. We just kind of followed through on it, so we have. Did that help answer your questions? I know they were primary.
Thank you, Dr. Castaldo. Are there any questions from board members?
I just have one question. What is the drop-dead date that the people who are getting their information together for medical exemption, when do they have to have the medical exemptions to go work in before they get told your student cannot, your child cannot come?
So that somewhat depends on the individual vaccination of that age level? So it's a middle school child? No, it's a high school child? So it's close. But we'll deal with that family individual.
Dr. Nippon?
No questions, I know.
Very good synopsis. I appreciate the work that you put into that. I just thought it was relevant based on the state law changes and liability, potential liability to the district if it wasn't being followed. So I thought it was good to kind of reset everything and get us on the same page. So I appreciate the work.
One of the biggest helps was definitely our attorneys. Because, you know, you hear that the law has changed, but when they send us the actual paperwork and the usually draft letters we can use, it really helps too. And the nurses, kudos to them because they started getting together the lists of students in the spring. So we had the lists ready to go. We knew exactly who we had to send those letters to. So it worked pretty well.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, moving on. 3.02, policy review update. Mr. Cairns?
This past Wednesday, on October 2nd, we held our first meeting in the board conference room, not here, but in the smaller room upstairs. The vast majority of our time was focused upon policy 4532, which deals with adult school volunteers. And we discussed the definition and differences between a volunteer and a visitor. In addition, we were led to a policy in another New York State school district, which is a lot more clearer than ours and a lot more defined than ours. And we may be beg, borrowing, stealing, using their policy as a basis for our own revised policy. So that's something that we'll be working on. We also have a volunteer form, but our current volunteer form really needs to be revised. Policy 6245 was discussed, and that's a policy dealing with some money matters, and it just needs to be revised after some errors were brought to our attention.
Could you repeat the policy number?
6245.
Thank you.
Dr. Nippon, Mr. Cairns, and I will be reviewing all of the policies from 0000 through the 3000s to make sure that they have been updated no earlier than 2014. So I know we found some that have been updated in 2013. We feel that's six years ago, and by the time we get to it, it'll probably be seven years. So we'll be looking at them and updating them and just making sure that some of those older dates, that date back a lot longer than they should, that they'll be updated. And they'll be on the agenda for our next meeting, which is scheduled for Wednesday, October 30th. So if anyone wants to attend, be our guest. And we'll be starting at 7:30. And if we have enough people, we'll be meeting in here, and I plan to meet here.
When will the board be getting the first draft of these policies?
As soon as we have them changed and revised and probably maybe have Mr. Shaw look at them just to make sure that's properly worked.
Thanks, Paul.
Mr. Shapiro?
Yes.
Remember, we had wanted to invite the SCA representative as well as the PTA because those are the groups that really should be part of that discussion.
Right, the SCA, we did have an SCA rep. And I did invite, in fact, this afternoon, I sent that in, an invitation to the PTA council. And I asked them to please have our presentation at our October 30th meeting. So hopefully they'll come, and that's why I hope that we'll be here.
Any other questions, comments?
Read your things.
All right, thank you. 4.01, discussion items. Livestreaming of board meetings. Now, this has already been pressed by our student speaker. So livestreaming of board meetings is something that I think most of us agree we should have set up through the district. I know I've mentioned it for a long time, I mean, years probably, about livestreaming and other ways of broadcasting. And in fact, we have a policy. It's policy 2382, which does permit livestreaming of board meetings. So the question really isn't so much about should we do it? It's a question of how do we implement it? So I'm not the tech savvy one at this table, so I'm going to defer to somebody else if they want to start a conversation. But again, I think we all agree that it's something that we should do. Sure. Oh, you mean like right now?
Right now.
Oh, please.
So in anticipation of this conversation, I had a conversation with the folks from the LAR. I believe, I spoke to Matt earlier, and I believe you're doing it through Facebook Live, which is great if you have Facebook. And we know there's something.
It'll be on other, on other platforms too, in the future.
So what was recommended to me by the LAR team was to do it through YouTube Live, and then it would automatically archive onto our YouTube channel. So that was the suggestion. At the moment, there's no fee, but we think in a year or two, Google's going to start charging us for stuff. So, but for now, there's no fee associated with it. And we believe it can be done through YouTube Live, and then it'll be archived and accessed immediately.
Right, so to clarify that a little bit, it means that we have our video camera there like we normally would, right? But it's going directly to YouTube?
It would probably go to a Chrome.
It would go to a Chromebook?
Okay.
With YouTube?
Okay.
Not to the districts?
So anybody can go on YouTube in real time and watch the meeting? But then it automatically gets archived to YouTube, which eliminates the need for us to have to upload it the next day or?
Correct. Which is why we have a live time now because of the necessity of uploading it. And so this would eliminate that.
Can we also have a link to it from the school website and the district's website?
Sure.
So that, you know, you can find the meetings easily on YouTube.
Do you have to link it by date? Or can you just?
I think we would link to the YouTube channel. That's the easiest way to do it. And then once at the YouTube channel, you can just look for the meeting. And they come up, you know, the most recent comes up first.
So we could just put a link on our district website, I guess, where we have our regular meetings available? And sort of take it from there.
So we're going to try it? We can try it?
Try it next meeting?
You score?
Okay. All right, so?
Maybe we could do holograms?
I'm not saying it's a hologram. We just get a cardboard cutout and just put it in the chair. All right, so I think we'll give that a shot. I mean, if we can maybe get that rolling for the next meeting on the Tuesday night, see how it goes.
I'll let you know.
Let it fly. All right. Comments, questions about that? Anybody want to add anything? Good, good.
I just want to say that I'm looking forward to working with the Assistant Superintendent of Business. I think that, you know, we all worked together and met Steve. I don't want to butcher his last name, so I apologize. So I just want to say that, you know, I thank Lee and all of the group of people that got together to interview all the applicants for this job and to come up with somebody who is a solid candidate. So thank you all.
Okay, I'm assuming that was your board member comment?
Yes.
Well, yeah, I just hadn't, like, I hadn't officially kind of gone from one to the next, but that's fine. So we're doing board member comments now? Anybody else? Anybody else? Anybody else? Board member comments?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, you're done. Anybody else?
I'd just like to congratulate our secretaries for ratifying their contract. It was overdue. I appreciate everything you do. You guys are great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to also thank Mr. Mascola for the work that he's put in, and Mr. Morgan for the work that he's put in, the two of them have done a fine job there, and they deserved the tenure that they got this evening, and we really appreciate their work. Thank you.
All right, we'll close that portion of the meeting and move to public participation. This is public participation on any district-related matters, action items. Segment not to exceed 30 minutes in total. Each speaker have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Please refrain from mentioning any students or district personnel. Feel free, step up to the podium. Nobody? All right. Going once? All right, we're done. Closing this portion of the meeting. Closing comments.
So I'd like to thank the board and the Administrative Hiring Committee for moving quickly on the Assistant Superintendent of Business position today. That quick movement was requested with all the holidays we have off and everything, but mostly because our candidate, our now new Assistant Superintendent of Business, has a significantly long agreement with his current district, that they can hold him for 90 days. And so, that's why his start-up date was in January, because I know some of you were wondering about that. It is possible that they will release him sooner, but if they don't, they can keep him for 90 days, and so we didn't even want to wait two more weeks and run further into budget season. So thank you for your willingness to work with, quickly with that. I'd also like to congratulate the Fields Hoppy team, who completed their second fundraiser tonight, and the Fields Hoppy family. The first one was the Military Appreciation Game, where over $1,100 were raised, which will support our trips overseas. Tonight was the Soup Game, where soups were donated from local restaurants and from families. I had no idea how much money was made because I was here, so I'll find out, but all of the donations will be made to our local soup kitchen. And lastly, I want to congratulate the JV tennis team, who usually we don't, we don't always mention our JV teams, but they just finished their season, girls tennis, 14-1, and they literally swept the Rockland County Championships, winning first, second, and third place in singles and in doubles.
Excellent highlights. At this time, I'll obtain a motion to adjourn. This will be to go back to executives, we can wrap up. Ms. Reamer? Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McKenzie? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned.